All right, I have straight up six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And Merrily, would you please provide the call-in information and then the slide that you had mentioned?
Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I would like to take a minute to share how to speak during public comment this evening. There are three separate public comment periods associated with tonight's agenda. The commission will take generally public comment during agenda items number three and number eight. In addition, the commission will take public comments specific to public hearing item number six. If you wish to speak during any of these public comment periods, you will need to access the Zoom link shown here on the slide or provided on the agenda located on the city's website under Boards and Commissions. You can also join the meeting by telephone by dialing 1-669-900-6833. Meeting ID number is 953-9649-5161. This will join you by audio to the meeting. You will be prompted by the Chair or the Secretary when the public comment is open. Use the Zoom features or press star nine on your telephone to request to speak. Please note that pressing star nine ones will raise your hand to speak, pressing it again will lower your hand. Please make sure your hand is raised if you wish to speak. Individuals shall limit their comments to three minutes per Nevada revised statute 241.020. Email public comments specific to agenda item number six will be read aloud at the beginning of the public comment period for this item. The emails will also be given three minutes per Nevada revised statute 241.020. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Blaco.
Here.
Commissioner Carey. Commissioner Pritzos.
Here.
Commissioner Rossin is absent this evening. Commissioner Vanderwell.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Amande Rinalis.
Here.
Thank you. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to by comment on any item on or off the agenda. Do we have anyone currently on the line for public comment?
There are no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. All right, let's close public comment. And we can move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. We have a second.
Commissioner Blake, all second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell and a second by Commissioner Blaco. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin is absent. Commissioner Vanderwell.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next is item five, approval of the minutes. First is the review and possible approval of the minutes of the June 30th, 2020 Planning Commission Study Session. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I move to approve the minutes of the June 30th, 2020 Planning Commission Study Session.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion. I think Pritzos got to first. We have a motion, Commissioner Vanderwell, and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Can we please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin is absent. Commissioner Vanderwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Second is the review and possible approval of the minutes of the July 2nd, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting.
Madam Chair, all 107 pages of those meeting minutes look good to me. I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vanderwell, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner Vanderwell. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin is absent. Commissioner Vanderwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. So next is our public hearing items, and we start with PCN 20-0025, which is consideration of impossible action on a request to amend a final handbook for Legends at Sparks Marina by modifying sign standards for movie theaters for a site generally located north on I-80, south of Prater Way, and west of Sparks Boulevard in the new urban district at Legend Zoning.
Hello, Chair Reed, members of the Planning Commission. I am Ian Cretton, your Development Services Manager. I'll be covering this item tonight. I'm going to share my screen. Is that visible by everyone?
Yes.
Good deal. As stated, this is a request to amend the Plan Development Handbook regarding standards related to movie theaters in the Legends of Sparks Marina. The site is probably fairly familiar to most of us. It is located just north of I-80 and just west of Sparks Boulevard. The proposed amendment to the handbook will apply to the entirety of this handbook. However, there's only one theater in there at this time and probably only one that'll ever be there, but it is something that could potentially happen. And so it's good to note that it is a change to any theater that comes along in the plan development. And it's also good to remember that the handbook permits all of the uses that are permitted in the Tourism Commercial District are permitted in the Legends of Sparks Marina Plan Development. To give you a little bit of background for this item, this is a cleanup item to rectify a procedural error in the original approval of the signed modifications. So following the approval of the amendment to the handbook that happened in April of this year, staff and the applicant's attorney identified a discrepancy between the owner's copy and the history of approved handbook amendments. The owner's copy showed modifications to the development standards for movie theaters with a revision date of January 7th, 2014. However, there's no record of an application or modifications to the movie theater sign standards submitted, approved, or recorded. And while the proposed modifications to the handbook, Handbook's movie theater sign regulations were not formally approved, the movie theater signs were installed consistent with the standards that they are proposing now. And we brought this up in the study session to address those comments and questions that Commissioner Carey had. The applicant applied for the sign permit on January 6th of 2014, and it was approved on January 28th of 2014. However, the permit was never issued, and a final inspection wasn't performed until July 19th of 2016. The work was done somewhere before 2016. I was able to track down a letter from our Building Department saying, hey, we went out and checked and the signs installed, but you never came up and picked up your permit or got an inspection. So they kind of followed up in 2016 and were able to get that rectified and sorted out. So currently, the movie theater sign requirements in the handbook are based on the sign standards for the Tourism Commercial Zoning District. The proposed amendments modifies the movie theater signs standards as follows. One IMAX wall sign is modified from three by seventeen, three foot by seventeen foot, to the as-built and permitted nine by forty-five and a half feet. And in the addition of some Legends vertical sign towers, I was able to track down that sign permit, and those don't show up on that sign permit. I'm assuming they are in relation to another part of the development. So this is a picture of the front of the Galaxy Theater, showing both the IMAX sign here as well as the larger one out here that kind of faces towards the freeway a little bit. You can see that these signs are, you know, generally are appropriate as far as scale and size and don't look out of place in this development, especially with the understanding that essentially the plan development was built on top of our Tourism Commercial Zoning District. These are really appropriately and well-stated signs. So there are 10 findings associated with the amendment of a plan development. In this presentation, the findings have been organized by topic, so they may appear out of sequential order. Findings PDA, PDB, and PDG address conformance. That's conformance with state law, the regional plan, the comprehensive plan, as well as the surrounding land uses and the development as a whole. The proposed changes are fairly minor and have been in place for roughly six years. Staff believes that the proposed changes are consistent with state law and the regional plan, as well as the comprehensive plan and the surrounding land uses. And we feel that they are an appropriate sign size and layout for the development as a whole. Findings PDC, PDD, and PDE address public interest. Due to the very, did I skip a, I apologize. Did I skip? I thought I might have skipped a slide. I apologize. Due to the very limited scope of this request, findings PDC and E are not impacted. You know, the fiscal positivity of this development and the reliance on the handbook aren't really changed by these minor changes to the sign standards for this specific use. The proposed changes provide placemaking and yet are not so large as to seem out of scale. And then staff also believes that PDD can also be made as the mutual interest of the residents and owners is being supported through this change. Findings PDF, H, and I also address public interest. This amendment brings the existing signs into conformance with the handbook. Additionally, these amendments would apply to any theater within the Legends Plan Development, as I'd stated earlier. The last finding has to do with public notice. The Planning Commission and City Council meetings function as the public hearings for this item. The request was noticed to all property owners within the Legends Plan Development Handbook and within 750 feet of the plan development. A total of 107 notices were mailed to property owners on July 22nd of this year, and public notice was also published in the Reno Gazette Journal on July 23rd. That is the end of my presentation. Staff is recommending approval of this item. I have a motion on screen. If you're interested in it, I'm also available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ian. Do any of the commissioners have questions? Might take me a while to see your hand if.
Here, I'll stop my share so it makes it a little easier to see everybody.
Yeah, I need to see the visual. Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ian, thanks for the additional info on the timeline. I think that really helps. I was just kind of curious. I don't want to get too much into the weeds on it, but the two vertical Legends signs, you mentioned that those might be located in a different part of the development. Are those the main Legends signs that you see from the freeway with the planes flying around them in the center? Are those not currently allowed in the handbook, and we're looking to add those in now, or is it something else?
That may very well be. Commissioner Carey, I was not able to track down where that piece was coming from that Danny was mentioning. It is in addition to the language in the handbook, but while I was able to track down the order of operations and kind of the timeline on the signs associated with the theater, I wasn't able to track those down just yet. So I'm still looking at that. Hopefully Danny will be back soon, can help me puzzle that out.
I appreciate that, and I guess I'm just more curious than anything at this point. I don't think it has anything to, you know, they've obviously been there for a while. I don't think it's been an issue. It seems appropriate with the tourist commercial zoning. If it's those larger, you know, freestanding main Legends signs in the center of the development, I believe that those have been there in place since before 2014. And so that kind of makes this handbook amendment even more important to kind of clean it up because I don't think those are going anywhere. But thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, do we need to have the applicant come up? Is the applicant even here? I don't, I don't think that it was meeting. I just wanted to ask. So if there's no other question, this is a hearing. So I'd like to open it up for public comment on this item. Merrily, go ahead and provide the public comment information with your slide.
Okay, the meeting access information is displayed on the screen. The telephone number for call-in participation for those that may just be listening, although you would already have it, is 1-669-900-6833. The meeting ID number is 953-9649-5161. You will press star nine to request to speak. You may also join by using the link displayed here, also available on the website on the agenda. Staff did not receive any email public comment on specific to this item, so we will now move to any callers who wish to speak.
There are no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. Since there's no callers and no, for public comment, let's close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion or possible motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Blaco.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right.
I moved forward to City Council, a recommendation of approval of the request to amend the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook, PCN 20-0025, based on findings A through J and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a second. Anyone?
All second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Blaco and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Any further discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Madam Chair, just a couple of comments for the record before the vote. Yeah, I agree with staff's recommendation on this one. I think from a Landy's perspective, these proposed signs make a lot of sense in this tourist commercial area. They've obviously been there for a while, and I think it's good that we clean up this handbook, and I think it'll allow us to move forward. And I don't think that these signs have posed an issue or if we construct in the other type of similar signs with this handbook amendment, if they would pose an issue. So I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossin is absent. Commissioner Vanderwell.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. Thank you, Ian. Next, we're going to move on to general business. And first up is PCN 20-0021, which is consideration of impossible action on a request to amend a tentative map to add 10 lots, increasing the number of lots from 183 to 193 by incorporating approximately 2.5 acres of a former site into the tentative map. The proposed amendment, amended tentative map occupies a site approximately 44.69 acres and a size located at 7,000 Rolling Meadows Drive and Sparks in the Plan Development Pioneer Meadows zoning district.
Thank you, Madam Chair, planning commissioners. I'm Jonathan Cummins, planner. I think I've shared my screen here. I'm pretty good at doing this, but I'm sure you'll let me know if you're not seeing this. So my presentation tonight is on PCN 20-0021, which is a request to amend the tentative map for Pioneer Meadows Village 6. As you pointed out in the description generally about the item, the overall to add 10 lots to the overall residential lot count to increase it from 183 to 193 by removing a two and a half acre park site from the location. So my first slide, two slides, is outlined in Cyan is the overall Pioneer Meadows site, which is just north of Vista Boulevard where it turns eastward towards Old Eagle. And just about smack in the middle of that site is Village 6, outlined and read here. And so the property in question is just about in the center of that image, which we'll discuss here in a moment. So a little bit of background, I wanted to sort of point out. So Village 6 overall is 44.69 acres, which as of now includes 183 residential lots and a 2.5 acre park site. So as you'll remember, in 2019, the Plan Development Handbook for Pioneer Meadows was amended to accomplish one of the goals that was agreed upon by the city's Parks Department and the developers to develop larger parks, regional-sized parks in place of smaller neighborhood parks. And so those 2019 handbook amendments involved removing two small park sites over Pioneer Meadows and incorporating those into the larger park site to make that the sole sort of regional-sized park for that area. So the removal of the park site for Village 6 specifically, which is what we're discussing here tonight, allowed the developer to include 10 additional residential lots in that space. And I have an image that'll show us what that looks like here in a moment. And so those 10 additional lots are going to fall into the SFR4 category per the handbook, which will require that they be in the density range of four dwelling units per acre. So I'll show you an image of what was originally proposed for this particular site. Just south of this cul-de-sac here was these areas here, which were two and a half acres in total, and were going to be the neighborhood park site that I mentioned. And as of today, that will be redesigned to look like this, where Dearborn Drive will go up through subdivision here to this particular neighborhood and to add in these additional lots, which are right here where that park is going to be. So of course, to amend a tentative map, we are required to go through the required 12 findings for a tentative map. And so I've paired up several of these for your review to sort of group things together for efficiencies sake, but also to expedite our discussion of these components. But T1 requires that we address conformance with the comprehensive plan. So staff has outlined in the staff report that we believe that this proposal conforms with Policy C4, which requires that there be appropriate pedestrian networks. Policy CF1, that other acceptable levels of service are being provided. Policy CC8, which looks for neighborhood diversity, which is accomplished in tentative maps with the adoption of differing lot sizes, building orientations, building materials, all those things which are established. And then Policies H1, which asks that we confirm that there's appropriate zoning and infrastructure and other facilities available at the site. I've paired findings T2 and T3 here for your review. These require conformance with the Street Master Plan as well as any environmental regulations that might be applicable. So the addition of 10 residential units here are not necessarily going to impact the overall street layout, the street design, networks for Pioneer Meadows. And so the environmental regulations, those agencies did not respond to this particular request. They were not concerned about the addition of 10 residential units here. And essentially, we defer back to what they required of the developer at the final map stage or previously at the tentative map or in handbook even. Findings T4 and T5 ask us to think about water and utilities. So with that, Trucking Meadows Water Authority provides water to this site. The developers, excuse me, the applicants, engineers have estimated that there'd be 6,500 gallons of water per day generated from these additional 10 units, as well as, excuse me, five acre feet per year. I was reading the utilities and plus the water. There'd be a new demand of five acre feet per year of water, and 6,500 gallons per day will be the new demand on sewer, on the utility side there. U6 asks us to consider the availability of schools, police, transportation networks, and parks. The Washoe County School District was the only agency who did respond to this particular amendment request. They stated that the site will be served by the New Bow Hatch Elementary School, which is just being built across the neighborhood in Cali Ranch. And then that there'd be three new students there, and one additional new student would be generated in demand for the Sky Ranch Middle School and Spanish Springs High School, which serve the site. Police protection is provided by the Sparks Police Department. They did not provide comments on this particular request. The transportation side of things, additionally, we didn't receive comments on this from RTC. So again, we would defer back to any requirements that they had at the end of map and final map stages for this particular site originally. So that goes back to the original tentative map from 2008. And the parks, again, was sort of our main concern here, discussion point, because we have essentially removed a park in order to accommodate 10 residential units. And so I kind of will interject here with the question that we had on Tuesday about the whole allocation of acreage for parks. The applicant confirmed with me today that what we've essentially done is take the three park sites and condense them down into one. And so where we were going to have a total of about nine acres worth of park site, we'll have more like seven and a half, but that will all be condensed into one park. So that park itself will be significantly larger than it would have been before. And so while this neighborhood is losing that small park site, it's going to be more than made up for in the much larger park that will be built in Pioneer Meadows in the near future. He7 asks us to consider the impacts on public streets. The traffic analysis submitted with the original handbook remains in effect. So this 10 additional residential lots will not affect that approval. Finding T8 asks us to consider floodplain slope and soil. This particular site is in the floodplain FEMA Zone X, meaning that it's, excuse me, not in the floodplain with that, in that category. The slope, the addition of 10 residential units doesn't affect the slope necessarily, and this site is relatively flat. And so we would only ask for further analysis and development standards on something that was over 5% slope over the entirety of the site, and this does not hit that threshold. And in regards to soil, again, the 10 additional residential units are not going to significantly impact the nature of the soil in the area. And essentially, we defer back into the original soil geotechnical report that were provided at the tentative map and panel mapping stages. Finding T9 asks us again to consider any responses from outside agencies. Again, we reiterate that we only heard from the Washoe County School District about the new demand generated by 10 residential units on their schools. Finding T10 asks for your consideration of fire protection services. This part of Pioneer Meadows falls within the six-minute response time from the Sparks Fire Department, and they will provide service. And finding T11 asks us to consider any other impacts that might be the result of this tentative map. Essentially, this is kind of a standard for tentative maps where staff identified only that we be cognizant of the requirement for landscaping maintenance, which was established through tentative maps at the site for a private HOA and/or LMA to take care of any common area landscaping. And in addition to that, all architecture, of course, is reviewed by staff against the approved handbook for Pioneer Meadows at all. And in addition to that, all architecture, of course, is reviewed by staff against the approved handbook for Pioneer Meadows at all stages of building. And T12, public noticing for the, for the item is achieved through the posting of tonight's agenda. I believe I addressed the question that we had about the park realignment and the acreages involved there and, and sort of the conclusions that the city and the developer came to in making these amendments to the tentative map. With that, the applicant's representative is available tonight, I believe, here with us on the call. And I'm sure available for your questions, but staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval. And I'll be glad to take your questions.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Carey.
There, Jonathan, I think you did a great job writing the staff report and appreciate the additional information about the regional park site and the development. Just a question concerning the proposed motion in the staff report. It said findings are subject to conditions 1 through 18. I can only see 17 conditions of approval in the, in the staff report. I, I've just, or are there 18 conditions? Or do we need to amend the motion if, if the commission wants to approve, approve this project?
You're correct. We did, we did have a typo here. There is a total of 17 conditions of approval. So I believe they'll want to amend that motion when someone makes it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Any questions or would the applicant like to provide any more information?
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, this is Stacy Huggins with Wood Rogers. I just wanted to just thank Jonathan for putting together a great presentation of this. I know it's a little bit confusing, but he really did a great job of covering the request for you guys tonight. We don't have any problems with the conditions. And I'm available if you have any specific questions for me.
Thank you, Stacy. Does any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there any other further discussion or all entertain a motion, amended motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vanderwell, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council to amend the Pioneer Meadows Village 6 tentative map, adopting findings T1 through T12. And the facts supporting these findings are set forth in the staff report and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 17.
Thank you. We have a second?
Commissioner Blaco, I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Vanderwell and a second by Commissioner Blaco. Any further discussion before we vote? Commissioner Carey.
Madam Chair, just a couple of comments for the record before the most, before the vote. I, as I said before, I concur with staff's recommendation. I think this, this, this makes sense and it meets the intent of what the amended handbook was. I also think that changing the Deerborn Drive from a car, from a cul-de-sac to thoroughfare will actually help with, with circulation. So I will be supporting the motion. On a somewhat related note, I, I would like to say that, you know, I did support the handbook amendment when we saw this in February of last year. But I disagree with the Parks and Recreation Policy and going to the shift from smaller neighborhood parks to larger regional parks. I, I get, I get the intent of the policy and why Parks and, our Parks and Rec Department is going that way. I think it has a lot to do with maintenance and the, and the limited, limited resources they have to maintain the neighborhood parks. But I just think from a, from a comprehensive plan standpoint, we should take a look at that, at that policy. I understand why it was written. I understand where, where we're going with that. But I think in studying for the AICP exam and going through some of the Parks and Recreation publications recently, there's a, there's a larger effort nationally to do smaller neighborhood parks. There's a lot of quality of life benefits, but also public health and recreation benefits. And I think we should take a serious look at going from the regional parks or going from, from smaller neighborhood parks to regional parks in our comprehensive plan. And, and I think I grew up in a neighborhood where there were neighborhood parks. I live in an area where there's neighborhood parks. And I think it's, I think the rest of the city should, should have that. And we should take a serious look at that policy and goal moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other further discussion before I call for the vote? All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen is absent. Commissioner Vanderwell.
Aye.
Great, motion passes. And that's the end of our general business. So next we have our last public comment. Merrily, can you go ahead and provide the call-in information again?
Okay, this is our last general public comment period. I have displayed the information on how to access the meeting on the screen. This is for general public comment. The telephone number for call-in participation during this general public comment period is 1-669-900-6833. And the meeting identification number is 953-9649-5161. Please use star nine to request to speak. May also join by accessing the Zoom link on the agenda on the City of Sparks website.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any requests to speak.
All right, thank you. Let's close public comment and move on to item nine, which is announcements from staff and commissioners.
Madam Chair, this is Armando Ranelles. Sorry, did you hear me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was ready to be acknowledged, sorry.
I apologize. I should apologize.
It's okay. I appreciate Commissioner Carey's comments. I will note that the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan Act is what they refer to it, was adopted by the City Council in 2013. So I think in terms of subsequent consideration of, of changes, it may be appropriate that, that's a discussion that starts in the Parks Department. Certainly, you know, not to say that we can't have discussion about it in terms of future updates to the, to the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, the broader plan. But I did want to note when it was approved and that it was approved by the City Council. And in terms of the hierarchy, if you will, of parks in terms of their size, there are, there is actually three categories of parks. There are neighborhood parks, which as Commissioner Carey rightly pointed out, are meant to be accessible at the neighborhood scale. Then there are community parks, which is actually what the proposed Park in Pioneer Meadows is to be at, at that sort of eight to 10, seven to 10, 11 acre scale. Those parks are intended to not only, and I think part of the shift there was not only in terms of the ability of the city to maintain these facilities, but frankly, was also to add a programmable element to the parks, ballfields in particular that could be scheduled, which you can't do at the, at the neighborhood park scale. And then the third category or tier of parks is, is the regional parks. And we only have a couple in the city's park. One is the, is Golden Eagle, of course. So again, just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you, Armando. Any other, any announcements from the commissioners before we adjourn? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first just wanted to congratulate you on your appointment to be in chair of the Regional Planning Commission. I think you're going to do a great job and represent the city well. I think you'll join a great list of Regional Planning Commission Chairs from the, from the City of Sparks. So best of luck on that. I also wanted to make a, or an announcement. As the commission is well aware, the RTC is going through the process of updating the 2050 Regional Plan Update. It's my understanding that the, that this process is continuing and they're doing outreach within the community and they, they may or may not be calling for, for new projects. But from what I've been hearing, there's a lot of major changes in some big projects that I think will affect the entire region and particularly what we're trying to do with our comprehensive plan as a city. So given how the RT, or how the Regional Transportation Plan impacts what we're trying to do, I wanted to make a request for the RTC staff to make a presentation on the Regional Transportation Plan Update to this body at one of our future meetings. I think that would be, would be really helpful and it would be good to have that, that discussion with them as this process continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. And thank you for the congratulations on the other appointment. It was certainly a surprise. Diane stepped down and allowed me to, to chair. So I really appreciate that. Any other announcements from staff? Well, with, yes, Merrily.
Real quick before we close, I would just like to say happy birthday to Ian. Today is his birthday.
Oh, happy birthday, Ian. Anything else? All right, well, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Ian.